Sleepy, Kyle?
No, I don't know if I slept that good, but I got sore throat today.
That's good.
So, I'll just cough on Carter. No, I haven't. It just feels dry. Alright, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Derek, go.
Okay, so we got major outage center, I'm sorry, Friday morning. I got a call from dispatch a little after midnight and they relayed that all five of the dispatch computers were down. Nine-one calls were still routing in and the radio system was still functional, but everything else was down. I got on my laptop, got connected again, tried to connect to our file server. As soon as I connected the file server, my laptop blue screen is shut down and at that point I was certain that we had an accident. I got my old laptop on, got connected and got on our Slack channel, which is instant messaging for all the IT directors in state of Iowa. From there, very quickly, we had five people on saying, hey, we're totally down. What are you guys seeing? Pretty quickly after that, there was about 20 people on with the same thing. So, the outage was caused by a product called CrowdStrike, which is supposed to be our antivirus and malware product. They released some bad patches a little after midnight Friday morning. Took down every network worldwide that had CrowdStrike on it. Some people are guessing 10 million computers, but I don't know that will ever know what that number is. And the outage put the computer in a blue screen, which shut the computer totally down so we couldn't remotely access it. We had to get in front of the computer, manually boot into safe mode, delete some update files, and then we were able to reboot the computer and bring it back up. It's pretty quick to do that process, but you still have to touch every computer. The majority of our servers were down as well during that timeframe. It took us, we had about 95% of our network up and running before 8:00 AM and the other strain servers were up by about 9:00, 9:00 o'clock to show. So, we were in pretty good shape. There were some counties that closed on Friday because they couldn't do business. The state still had issues as of Friday afternoon. Driver's license was unable, I'm sorry, motor vehicle was unable to do transactions until Friday afternoon. The driver's license test tablet is still down. They just don't have enough field technicians to come out and touch each computer and so they're still trying to get that rundown. I'm pretty happy with how we turned out. The one takeaway and one action item that we're gonna do is we're gonna do a backup of one computer in each department and then all of the dispatch computers. So, we'll have a little bit of expense for more hard drive storage space for our backup server. So, once a week, we'll do a backup of that equipment. So, if it is truly down and destroyed, we'll be able to fail back. So, okay, international airports were shut down for several days because of this. Major corporations are their customers, so they're still dealing with cleanup. Yeah.
So Derek says that we were in good shape and we were in good shape because he came in at 12 or 12:30 and worked until we all got here that morning. So when we were here at 8:00 or shortly before, we all got right on and that's because him and Donna were here in the middle of the night making sure we would be ready to go in the morning. So, that's thanks to him.
That's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Do you guys have any questions or suggestions or anything you'd like done differently? I mean, we have to run some sort of antivirus. This is a statewide provided product that does process anything. It's the first time this happened, pretty major.
He was on network news on the CloudStrike. That was their chairman, I forgot what they called him. He didn't have any answers.
No, and their apology was much less than sincere. We had about 4,000 people on a conference call Friday morning, Friday afternoon, and it was a lot of upset folks.
So was it all bad patches or whatever work on their end or was it someone that got into the system outside?
I don't know that will ever know. They're saying they did get hacked, but I find hard to believe that they didn't push a certain region of the world with their patching structure. So, just the Americas, just Asia. It would, I don't know for sure and I don't know that will ever know. But it does show our reliance on one software vendor and Microsoft Windows, which we don't really have. So, I was kinda thinking our backups would be the only other safety map that we could come up with.
CloudStrike's out of India, so that should make it feel better about the governor.
Right.
It's big and they've got all kinds of federal contracts and a bunch of 500 companies. It's the bigger corporations that got hit the hardest. We saw some, I know one of my cousins has a network with 6,800 computers on it and they have a very small IT department and so they're still struggling with cleanup. And then they wanted to fly him, he's out of Milwaukee, they wanted to fly him over to Europe. Well, Milwaukee Airport was totally down, so that was a non-essential. Yeah, fantastic.
Thank you, Derek.
Our library software was down too. We got hit.
Are your backup running now though?
Yes.
Alright, thank you guys.
Thanks for the update.
Yep.
Anything else for public discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion for the agenda minutes. Roger, do you have a second? Okay, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. I have three handwritten claims. Tammy, you wanna talk on them quick or?
Sure. So, the first one is for Pitney Bowes. We sent in our $10,000 yearly and they didn't receive it in time. So, the $500 was to get us through until the $10,000 hit them. The 449743 for Cassous Regional is one of the pass-throughs. That goes for the Board of Health grant. The other one came from the state of Iowa also, but it's for Cassous County Sanitarian for 3328.
Alright. Any questions from the board? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
They have now received our $10,000 checks.
Okay, that's good to know. That's not lost.
Not lost.
Alright. Perfect. Any assignments?
Yeah.
All of us or?
Yeah.
Do you wanna talk on the next item here?
Yeah, so this is for the jail. There were four jailers that are getting longevity of five extra cents. So those have been added on to their wage scale, but because it wasn't on the last wage scale you approved, we need to approve it again so that their wages are up to date. So, you do have the list in front of you of what, who those four jailers are.
Alright. Any questions on that? Now they entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Is there any discussion or further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Next, we have quarterly reports. Those are in our packet.
Those are in your packets, yeah.
I'll let her get that signed. Alright, has everyone seen quarterly reports? If there's, I would entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve the quarterly reports.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
I don't see a spot.
I don't think so. Usually it's two copies of the share, so.
I don't see one. Just sign underneath here somewhere. We're moving on that one, do you want?
Okay. I'll just leave that here till it comes back.
Thank you.
Hey, isn't that nice? Thank you. Alright, Nick, I think we're ready for the treasurer's annual report.
Okay, morning.
Morning.
I think you all received a copy of this to go over before now.
Yep.
Well, it's, you can see we have a beginning balance as of July 1st, 2023. Of all the funds, $23,679,852.91. We have revenues, $73,193,010.41. And the disbursements for the year were $73,655,112.40. So, that leaves us with a fund balance as of June 30th, 2024 at $23,217,750.92, which isn't, I mean, we're pretty close to what we are with our beginning balance. That's a good thing. And then the last column there is the outstanding warrants and of course, that's higher than we like to see it. And then we go into the revenues for the year. I don't know if anybody had any questions on any of the revenues? If not.
Do you link to property taxes? That's pretty consistent.
Yeah, pretty well. Choosing pretty well because tax sales.
Yeah.
That.
Too small.
Yes, before they become the link went into the next year. The link went, obviously, they're not into the next year, which these are the next year ones. So. So.
Those are the properties nobody even wants to buy in tax.
Correct. Yep, and then someone does come in and pay it, so. And then we have the expenses listed. Any questions on those?
Any questions from the board? Alright. Anything else you wanna highlight, Nick?
Um, not really, just we're, did better in some places this year than in the past. Our interest amount, interest on investments, that ended up being $651,432.70 and $546,146.89 of that went to general fund, so.
At the end of the year, we ended up with $247,734 on self-insurance.
What line is that?
It's at the end.
Oh, the end of the expenses?
You're talking the fund balance?
Yeah.
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 In the middle of the first page.
Self-insurance.
Forty-two. Is that where you're talking, Roger? Line forty-two.
Yeah, B-line forty-two.
Self-insurance, yeah.
Two point, almost 2.9 million. But there's 280 or 278 warrants.
Outstanding warrants on that.
Does that include the interest?
No, yeah, that would include the interest in that.
The interest on those dollars?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I, that was the next question.
Yeah, that self-insurance was, for the year was $68,209.8. Transfer station was $29,581.22 and E911 was $7,495.51.
Do you think the Homestead tax credit thing is gonna keep growing?
Well.
About people who were gonna sign up for it or already signed up for it?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's, yeah, it's just a credit from the state that, that they're still funding some of that one and most of it, so.
You mean the 65 and older, is that?
Yeah. Oh, that one?
No, no, the Homestead tax credit.
That's not the over 65 one you're talking about?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
That one cost us a little money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unfunded mandate by the state.
Yeah.
Right, cuz they're not backfilling that one.
No.
Some people of 65 should be able to interact with it. They should give the break for the ones that are under 30.
Sure.
Well, if there's nothing further, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I got one question yet, Nick. Motor vehicle license issue, you know, it's $4,500,000. How much of that do we get to keep?
We got to keep, where are we at? We're on page. So, we're able to shoot in.
16100 is the line that he's opening.
Yeah, yeah. We got to keep And the one that gets me is the use tax collected, 3.1 million.
Yeah.
We gotta keep, what was that one? $3,919.
And six cents. They paid for the help, doesn't, that's not even close.
No, they're, but they, that is going to increase, starting January 1st.
It is?
Yep. We're gonna be increasing in like our use tax that we receive, our title, the titles we issue and, and that motor vehicle is gonna increase also.
It wasn't that per state legislation, they increased some of those, I thought, so.
It was time, it was spending decades since any of that.
And it's still probably not even close to what it should be, but.
You're right.
Yeah.
But the state has a big budget surplus, they don't know what to do with it. It could help the counties out a little bit.
Yeah.
At least make it net zero.
Right, that'd be, that'd be alright.
Well, we have a motion second on the floor. Any further discussion again? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion carried unanimous. Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Kendall? Good morning.
Morning. How you guys today?
Good, how are you?
Should've received the information I gave you, Tammy. Schmidt property, the conservation board received that donation through a life estate when he passed away in March of this year. So, it's approximately 80 acres and I included the parcel number for you for last year's taxes and also a property map of the area identifying the two parcels. And conservation board is requesting a tax abatement on those, for taxes on those two parcels.
Any questions from the board or comments?
What's the plans, what's the plans for the land? The land is gonna be open to the public. The west tract will be open for nature study, hiking, that type of thing, but he requested in the agreement that no hunting be allowed on that tract. Then there's a smaller tract, the east tract across the road, which is mainly wooded, will also be open to the public. That one will be, hunting will allow, arbitrary only hunting. So, both areas will basically be wildlife areas, but also open to the public for nature study, hiking, etc. I know our environmental education program is excited about that because they take a lot of field trips to the Union Slough for birding and a lot of different things. This will allow one that's a little bit closer and actually on our own property, so we have less restrictions for, we wanna dig school groups and stuff out there. Right now, the, we have had property since March, but due to the flooding, as you can see on the property, the Buffalo Creek winds through both tracks. Most of it has been underwater this spring, there's a lot of that areas in floodplain and we'll be working on getting signage up and then we'll have it open to the public hopefully this fall. What about the acreage? The acreage, we've evaluated several of the buildings. A couple of them are worth keeping, the remaining ones, there's a house there that's in very poor shape, there's a garage that's in very poor shape that'll get bulldozed once the probate has been completed. That's where we're in right now, so. End of this month is still in probate and then the executor has been working with the, there is a few errors and friends of getting the contents of the house claimed. Once they have completed that, it will be turned over to the conservation board and we can do whatever we want with the house. The plans are, because of the shape it's in and the liability, a safety issue, it will be buried.
Can I one across to that? Utilize the house for training purposes for the fire department. I know that previously they used, you know, old houses and things like that that are gonna be buried for doing training and stuff, so they can do like a controlled burn on it and do some training with that, that I think that would be a good use.
I have looked into that and.
Depends if there's asbestos or not.
It's a comment I got from one of the contractors who gave us an estimate on tearing down the house. He said he prefers not to do that because when they do that, then he has all the nails to deal with when they bury the site. But that doesn't mean we can't do it, it's just a concern of the contractor. That's right. But that would be an option as a training.
Very good.
Alright. And all the other properties and stuff we've done the tax abatement on, right?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Alright, any, any other questions or comments from the board here? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve that.
I'll move to approve.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Thanks, Kendall.
Think one of those 99-year deals?
No, this is permanent. So, this is inheritance, basically, it's not, it's not a lease or anything.
No, it's, it's.
As a gift.
The county's turn over warranty to the property through the life estate.
Yeah. Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kendall. Is Donna coming in for the wellness committee minutes or update, do you know?
I don't think so. I think it's just.
Does anyone have any questions or comments on those? Alright, if not, well, let the record reflect, we know there's those minutes. Alright, next item we have here is to set date and time for FY '24, '25 budget amendment. Tammy, you got a date in here in mind?
Yeah, we're requesting August 13th at 8:30 AM. Yeah, um, we're requesting August thirteenth at eight thirty a.m.
Okay. Any conflicts with anybody's schedule that way? Double check that, or?
I'll be here.
All right. Any discussion on that or motion, just at that date?
I'll move just at the date for August thirteenth for budget amendment.
All right.
You're in.
Is there a second? Okay. Any discussion on that time?
What time do you like, Dan?
Eight.
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty in the packet? Are you good with that for your motion?
Yes.
And Jack, you second, okay. I assume that, but probably you'd double check. Any further discussion here? Okay, um, I guess my, one question I have for the board is, is this, the discussions we've had about a budget amendment, is this your intention for final version?
Correct.
We don't have.
What, what do you mean by that?
The conversations we've had about changes to put into it, just before publishing and stuff. That was. Okay. All right, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. We will set that as our date and time of August thirteenth at eight thirty a.m. Next up is the resolution to establish the compensation board, which is, there's some information in our packet. Um, I think we talked about this a little bit previously. If you got anything you wanna share.
So, effective July first, um, Senate file twenty-four forty-two, dissolved compensation boards for counties. So, as of right now, there are no compensation boards. In order to enact one, the county board supervisors would have to pass a resolution to, uh, have compensation board in their county. So, I have talked to other elected officials, Karen, Nick, Todd, and Roger, and, um, all of us were in favor of adopting a resolution. So, we are here to ask you to, um, adopt a resolution so that we can still have our members support us each year, um, for the compensation board. I don't know if you guys have anything.
I just feel they bring a lot of good information to the table for the board to work with deciding what they're going to do and an intricate part of the, of the process. They've done well for us in the past as far as research and things like that, and I'd like to see it continue so.
Yeah, I think, I think the compensation board is a, is a good tool for the board supervisors. Um, they do a lot of work and investigating and, and comparison, and they bring that to the board too, so I think, uh, I think it's worth that.
The rules have changed in how compensation boards work now, so that's highlighted in the changes that I put in your packet. And then I also, um, put in there, um, the sample of that resolution to establish one if you so choose.
Just the only comment I have on it is unless the state changes on how we can collect taxes, compensation board can make recommendations. We're not gonna, the, the next board's not gonna be able to implement big changes because there's not gonna be any tax dollars to do it. So, they're gonna have to be realistic in what they recommend.
Well, at the end of the day, with whatever they recommend, now with the changes, yeah, it's good, it's good information, but that's about all it is now.
The board that does still will have to find.
Yeah, it's just been that way. It's just, it's good input for information.
Well, and, and now it does change that you don't have to do a equal percentage reduction. They can be in, moving independently and I, I guess, I think the information's good, but, um, I don't, I don't know if it's something that's really that necessary for us right now. We, we're gonna have to make the decision here and to some degree, I think it'd be good if, if we each do our research in that capacity too. I think it would give us a little better firsthand knowledge, so.
With, um, also with two new board members coming on in January, having a compensation board do that work will be helpful for them because they're not gonna, you know, they're just gonna be learning a lot of stuff at, in a short period of time. So, anything that anybody from the outside can offer to them will be helpful. So, a compensation board, I think, um, presenting that information to the board would be very helpful, especially for those two new members.
I agree.
Hey, there's no harm in it, but like Roger said, it'd be realistic too.
Yeah.
And I, my only thought is that they come in with raises that aren't possible. Are they going to think that we don't listen to them? Or that the new board doesn't listen, that's.
I guess it is what it is at that point.
Yeah.
Uh, and I think there's a lot. I mean, prior with, with keeping things in even reduction, there were ways they kind of structured things to say, okay, if this area is of higher importance, they could, could weight that heavier. And I think there's, there's less protections in that regard, um, so.
I, I think they did an excellent job of bringing in figures that, from other counties and statewide, that was very good for us as supervisors, so it, I see both sides of it.
For a new board member last year, it was interesting to look at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And this, I mean, it does talk about the timeline in there. We could establish one, we could wait, we could do it at any point in time basically too. So, I mean, it's, it's good, good information to have, but also we're not tied into a certain timeline at this point, but if we do go forward with something, it'd be good for them to be able to know what their roles are too, so food for thought.
We'll move to approve resolution zero seven two two four one.
Jack, we can't approve the resolution yet because part of the resolution says that we have, in there, we have to name who our representatives are, and then the terms have to be staggered, and so we have to draw who has what terms.
To redo all that.
So, so that part, that part of it, that's kind of why we're talking about this today. We can't approve that actual resolution until you guys tell us that that's the way you're directing so that we can get our members in and then, and draw what terms they have.
So, how about we?
I have any. Include the, the new board member, that, that representative?
Yeah. So, how about we have something where we plan to move forward with a compensation board, but then have each group of elected officials, um, like us as a group, and then the individual electeds, um, submit names to us, and then that could be put into the resolution for, I don't know, month out or something like that.
We don't wanna ask our representatives ahead of time.
Well, yeah, yeah.
We don't know that, you know.
You're looking for direction.
We, we, yeah, we wanna know that that's the direction it's going.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. If we do a motion to move forward.
Yes.
And, and kind of set a date for something that way or get names turned in to us.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you're just waiting for a motion to start the process.
To start the process.
So, we're interpreting that as we're keeping this compensation board? Am I hearing that?
Well, that'd be the.
I would say.
Vote here, discussion.
Jack does have a motion on that.
Yeah. Do you, would you?
Vote to proceed with the compensation board.
Your motion is to proceed with the compensation board and have people turn in their names to us? Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. And when Tammy's done writing, I'll let her repeat that motion so everyone knows what we're voting on.
Okay, um, motion by Plath, second by Nath, to proceed with the compensation board resolution and have elected officials turn in the names of their comp board members to the board.
All right, that is the motion on the floor. Is there any questions or discussion on that motion?
Uh, for discussion, um, do we want to decide who ours is if we're comfortable with what we've done last year?
Probably have to put that on the agenda.
That, yeah.
Should be on the agenda.
Should be separate.
Okay, I didn't know if we could hand it back and forward discussion or not.
I mean, we could discuss it, but not actually setting that.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Plath?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
Lacter?
Yes.
Nath?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes. Motion carried unanimous. If everyone can find a representative and get back to us, we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll send this, uh, annual report to the paper.
Thank you, Nick.
All right, um, next up is an agenda item for appointing a representative to North Iowa Regional Housing Authority Board. Believe Donna has talked with Justin Stotz and, and is willing to do it.
It, I think she's willing to do it temporarily until you find somebody.
Okay.
If I understand correctly.
Yeah.
And let's not make it a temporarily for.
Yes.
Twelve years.
A permanent temporary.
Right.
Yeah, um.
Well, that's, yeah, thank you, Donna, for that.
Yeah, and even like the information side of it, um, when I talked to Justin, I'd asked if us as board members could be on there to fill that too, and he said yes. They do have a board member from, I don't remember which county, and, but the problem with that is their meetings are scheduled for Tuesdays at nine o'clock in the morning. So, I guess just, it would be something I'd be interested in, but probably in an alternate role, so. And then obviously, if there was, if there was conflicts with our meeting here, I wouldn't be able to attend, so I wouldn't want to be the focus on it. But just throwing that out as food for thought. I don't know if anyone else has any questions or comments or anything, but.
Motion to appoint Donna Nielsen to the North Iowa Regional Housing Authority Board.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to appoint Donna Nielsen to the North Iowa Regional Housing Board. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
I asked a couple other people this past week about, uh, I didn't realize how hard it is to find somebody to sit on a board. Yep.
Not always easy, so.
Gordon, you called Doug?
Yep.
Yep, we are.
Good morning, Doug Carter. We are up to right away. Thanks, bye.
Doesn't say anything.
All right, there might not be anything.
Yeah, he might not have any.
Usually when there's nothing there.
We may have a little.
Break?
Well, I guess we do. Uh, this is.
Forty-five, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
We got a break right now.
Do you want, uh?
It'll be happening soon.
I was gonna say, since we just called in, I hate to go turn around and take a break right now, but.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, Doug.
Good morning.
Did you have anything for right away?
There is no request of construction right immediately.
Um, and we'll, we'll wait till the other two get back here for your part, but I did, I just was gonna let you know, I got a call from Dave Rock the other day. He asked about a tile, um, washout first, but then he said that he was asking about the possibility of a culvert between sections seven and eight of Eagle. He's like a hundred, hundred and twenty yards north of the intersection, um, of A sixteen there. He said there was water over the road and I think it was still barricaded. He said, but the one side was substantially lower than the other, so didn't know if there was one there that needed cleaned or if there was.
Yeah, I know about the Eagle Township, we had a few of those types of situations and Bill's been working on it, so, uh, specifically on that location, I don't know, Kyle.
Okay, I just.
We'll look into it.
Yeah, I just thought I'd highlight that for you.
You say that was a few hundred feet or did you say?
I think, I think he, I think he said a hundred to two hundred yards.
Yards?
Um, I'm sure when you get up there, Bill gets up there, you'll see the.
Is that level B road? I think it is.
Couldn't tell you. I, I'm pretty sure, well, I know it's gravel, but, um, I don't know if it's level B or anything.
Okay. All right.
Think we can go into discussion, man.
Sure.
If you're ready.
Um, I guess first of all, I'd like to thank the IT department. Crowd strike struck, uh, Thursday night, Friday morning. Um, I was made aware about it, aware of it. The transfer station about six o'clock didn't have computer access. And by that time, our IT department, uh, had a fix for it. By the time that I got into work, Doug Crouch, uh, in our office was ready to go out and touch all the computers that are, uh, remote out on our network. It's good to know that we have valuable employees that, uh, knew the problem existed shortly after midnight and took care of it and did not, it did not, not interrupt the transfer station. It did not interrupt the secondary road department. So, I thank them for all the work they did. Uh, disaster declaration, we have been declared. We've gotten our application in for public assistance, uh, for two different disasters. So, our office is gonna get busy getting all the reports ready for that. Tammy, do you wanna talk just a little bit about that, uh, Buffalo Township urban renewal? Do you want to just visit or take over?
Go ahead.
But we had an opportunity, Tammy and I, to visit with, uh, Amy Bjork, is that how you pronounce her last name? And, um, there's been some law changes and we have our plan that, uh, includes an area that can be worked on, uh, for that. Uh, we need to have a, a public hearing, uh, to specifically mention plan, uh, projects. So we'd like to, uh, she would like to set a public hearing or have the board set a public hearing on August thirteenth and have a public hearing on September seventeenth, uh, to include, it would be the bridge at Michelson Marsh, the bridge around the corner from Michelson Marsh, uh, resurfacing B fourteen from P, uh, sixty four, or P sixty-six to P sixty, uh, resurfacing B sixteen from P sixty to P sixty-four and then resurfacing a short bit of P sixty-six from, there's a road that runs east out of Titanca and that would run up to B fourteen. Uh, these projects, the estimated costs on them are, when you add them all up, they're greater than what we anticipate the, uh, TIF funding to actually come in at. However, depending, for example, uh, the bridge around the corner from Michelson Marsh is eligible for federal aid and if we would choose to construct it with federal aid, uh, then we could choose to, and we had money available, we could resurface uh, one of those other roads. So we're putting all the projects in there specifically, uh, described so that as the money comes in and as the projects come available or we decide to do them, we'll have them. Uh, the next step is actually how we're gonna fund it. As you guys know, we've had internal loans and are in the process right now of repaying those internal loans. So if the internal loan is available or if we need to get some sort of a bond and borrow, that's, that's what we need to really decide. And we'll have to get some sort of financial advisor. A few weeks ago, there was a financial advisor here speaking to the board, I don't know if that's what you guys would like to do, um, but that decision needs to be made. Michelson Marsh Bridge will be ready to let, uh, this fall, early winter. So it can be constructed next year, that's kind of what we have planned for that. Anything else you wanna add, Tammy?
This will be an amendment to our existing urban renewal, so it won't be an additional, it will be amendment to the one that we already have. Um, currently, as far as their internal loans, right now, we have five hundred and ten thousand, two hundred and one dollars and sixty nine cents left to pay on our internal loans. But our urban renewal agreements with the city of Tyke and Gold Eagle are now expired. So that TIF revenue will now all be coming to the county. We won't be giving half to Gold Eagle and a quarter to the city anymore, so we will be receiving more funds from TIF revenue on that project. Um, but we need to identify the new projects as well, so.
How many years are left on that?
On?
The TIF?
Well, it's ten for us, right? So, because ten is up and then ten more years for us, so.
Is that about a hundred, they're short a hundred and thirty thousand per year?
Yeah, about that, but last year I think it was one twenty-eight, so.
That's what I was thinking.
So, yeah, and it seems to go up every year, so, um, I think in less than five years, that that internal loan will be paid for. We looked at ending fund balances projected for rural services and if we took a million out of there, you'd be barely over the twenty-five percent, so. Yes, there is money in there, but it's, it would be very tight.
So is that the size of loan you're looking for, is a million?
Well, Amy suggested one point two, just to make sure that, uh.
With the cost of.
The co, it covers cost of revenue.
But if we, okay, if we've got ten years left and a hundred and.
We gotta, I think it's about one point four million projected.
Okay, and five hundred to pay yet? And there's interest adding on that yet, I suppose?
No.
Internal loan fund.
Oh, so we're, we're not paying ourselves any interest.
Can we, there is a balance in that fund already too, is that correct, Tammy?
In the TIF fund?
In that Buffalo.
No, we pay that out every year.
I thought there was a balance in that construction fund.
Oh, in the construction fund?
Yeah.
I don't know, you'd have to look in that, in that one.
Report earlier?
I, I know the TIF stuff is, cause that's where I, I knew that one twenty-eight was in there.
There's only three hundred, there's only three hundred forty-three dollars in the TIF fund, so it would be the other fund.
Gold Eagle's not gonna collect any more money off the TIF, so we'll have more money available in the TIF.
Yes, there's this done.
Okay, yeah. TIF reimbursement fund or would it be, cause that was three forty-three was balanced at
The TIF fund.
Twenty twenty-three, but then ending was forty-eight six oh six, but then there's outstanding of forty.
It hasn't been cashed yet, yeah.
So there won't be anything in there? So if we have a hundred and twenty-eight times ten years minus, I minus five hundred thousand, but what'd you say we had outstanding was?
Five ten, two oh one sixty-nine.
Okay, so it's short of.
Five hundred thousand.
Yeah, so it's short of eight hundred thousand that we would have coming in unless, unless that revenue increases.
You'd have enough to pay for the bridge and sorry, the board, huh?
Possibly.
Amy did recommend, um, having a financial advisor look at it, um, and make a recommendation to the board. Um, so that we're not going, so you're not going in it blind.
Yeah.
Would be best, yeah.
Well, it'd be the right thing to do for the auditor to make sure that she has the right numbers to work with, to have a financial advisor there to help you, otherwise you're you're gonna be plugging numbers in that you are not quite sure of.
Yeah, I just wanna do some rough math quick.
Well, it's, it's not, it's not my job to tell you whether to take out a loan or to, that's not mine. Yeah, that's your job, not mine.
Yeah.
I would suggest an internal loan, so you don't pay interest on it.
I, I, I would agree with that in principle, but if we spend all of our fund balance down, we're not gonna have the money to do that. I guess that plays into other conversations, but. I think that's probably something that, well, a lot of components to that probably need to be thought out pretty carefully.
Well, wouldn't a financial advisor be able to give us a recommendation on that, Tammy?
Yes, I believe so.
Maybe on the dollars, but probably not on the, our budget side of things, I wouldn't think they would.
She can look at our budget fund balance and give a recommendation is what she should do, our E.
Potentially.
I think today we have to decide if you want a financial advisor for the TIF district, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, we're ju, you've already decided on her, I mean, you guys did approve that when she was here, so.
She was gonna look at options.
Basically, what you have to decide is if you want us to make contact with her and start, you know, looking into this, otherwise you're gonna have to do it on your own because we need to do this amendment in order to get these projects done and we have to decide where the funding's gonna come from, so.
I think Doug, when you were talking earlier, did you say August thirteenth for a public?
Yeah, that's what Amy suggested, that's when she, she would be preparing all the documents.
To set it at that point.
Yeah, in September seventeen.
I can't say, I knew we just set the other budget amendment for that and I didn't know publication time if we set another one that fast.
No, this is just to set the hearing.
Okay.
So August thirteenth would be the date for.
Setting a public hearing.
That's, that's the day we would set a hearing here, possibly.
What did you say the proposed date was for that, September?
The proposed public hearing date was September seventeen. And that would be to amend the plan, the, the other part of this financing projects. Uh, construction, the bridge south of Titanca was completed last week and it is open for traffic. Project on the Boeckburg Road is, uh, substructure is complete, they're forming the deck and they are having, in fact, they're having a pre-pour meeting tomorrow, so it looks like they'll be pouring the beginning of the next week, Monday or Tuesday. Uh, resurfacing, all the contract work is completed, uh, so traffic is using those roads. Uh, we got some, uh, tile that are going underneath the roads, I think the, uh, DD sixty sub four boring up north of Sway City may have completed yesterday afternoon or they'll complete it today, move off, so that is completed, uh, that P thirty. Right south of Burt, that tile crossing, there's a private drain going in there, has complete, is complete and we are looking at a couple, I think we have three more applications that are, uh, being discussed right now. Roadside spraying is occurring south of Highway eighteen, uh, spot spraying for thistles, so, uh, BMW is doing that work. I'm working on our annual report, I hope to have that completed in a couple of weeks so I can present it to the board. And then also safety action plan, October fourth, uh, everybody's been invited to that. So, just so you guys are aware of that one as well. Uh, planning and zoning, uh, August fifth, we, the planning and zoning commission is going to meet to act on the recommendations about the moratorium. And then August sixth, I'll place that on the board's agenda for, for, for the board to go through their actions. I did receive an email yesterday from a gentleman, his name's Luke Seabird. Uh, he's a field specialist with the Iowa State Extension and Outreach Community and Economic Development Unit. And he was, uh, made aware that we are, uh, discussing, uh, solar energy development and he was wondering if, uh, the board would be interested in having, uh, he and others in the solar, that have knowledge of solar energy uh, come up for a public meeting. I think it would be a good opportunity, I know there's a Lynn County where the, I think it's Dwayne Arnold, uh, the nuclear site, I think they're putting in solar there, and Lynn County made a lot of, uh, just recently developed their solar energy ordinance. It's an opportunity, uh, he's received a grant through CAS, he would come up, have discussion, listen to that and write up a report. Big opportunity for the public to join if they would like, the board to join, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission could be in on it and just try to get, uh, discussion going about what people feel is being important and what people's feelings are. Um, I invited Luke to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on August five, he's not available to talk to the board on August sixth. But, uh, after the Planning and Zoning Commission meet, I will also ask them what their feelings are and bring their opinions to the board as well, and maybe Luke can, um, possibly at another time either come and talk to the board about, uh, some of his work or what his shop, workshops are and, uh, or virtually come and talk to, and talk to the board. And then tomorrow at one o'clock, we have a workshop with Michelle Moon from Wellmark.
All right. Thanks Doug. Anything from the board?
Yeah, I get, I had one, another complaint about B fourteen where you have the turn lane going into Gold Eagle.
Yes.
Coming from the east, going west, there's cars that are taking that, if they're not familiar with Titanca area, they're taking that turn lane to the elevator and thinking that it's a turn lane for the intersection and then they're pulling back out in front of traffic from behind them. Okay, on the Black Hawk, there's signs that have an arrow, you know? I don't think those signs should be there because people that aren't familiar with Titanca are turning into that and then they come back in and then somebody's behind them, they pull back in in front of them. Is there some way that we can make that more understandable for the traffic? Um, can we put a sign there that says this is not a turn lane? I don't know.
I don't know, um, yeah, there, there's traffic marking in the lanes. I, yeah, I can understand a little bit, uh.
Paint the big road signs like I need to see.
Elevator turn lane only or something?
I don't know, it, it, well, there's, somebody slipped a motorcycle the other day and before that, there was a car that had had an almost wrecked air.
There was an accident?
Well, they didn't report it, but it, he almost slipped a motorcycle and the guy on the motorcycle wasn't happy, he wasn't from out of the area yet. I'm just asking, I can see where they get confused, yeah.
Well, that might be something also to visit about at that safety action plan, see, um, and I can certainly, I, I mean, I, I know that I know exactly what you're talking about, Roger.
Yeah, I just.
We'll review it a little bit.
Yeah.
And see. Okay.
I can see where they're getting confused, but do I have, I understand it, but somebody else, I, I get it where they don't get it.
Okay, we'll take a look at it.
Yeah.
Did you save the time for that safety action plan?
I don't know where else to talk to him.
Doug sent an email out here.
I think it's part of the invite that was sent, nine o'clock, nine o'clock to eleven, seven, nine o'clock to eleven thirty?
All right, anything else for Doug?
As we get closer to Josh, we'll be putting, uh, I'll be making the board aware.
Oh, period, that's usually thirty.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty. All right, thanks Doug. Do you wanna do discussion now?
Sure.
All right.
So reminder, one o'clock this afternoon, you have the workshop with EMA, EMS sheriff and E nine one one, I did make copies of the lease uh, for everybody to go through at one o'clock. Um, tomorrow, we have the one o'clock Wellmark workshop, as Doug mentioned. Um, and then next week, we have ten o'clock hearing for DD sixty sub three and then at one o'clock, DD one ten informational meeting. And that's all that's on the agenda so far for next week. I also wanted to get just a quick clarification for you guys on the two percent salary changes, I know that that meant two percent for everybody but supervisors. For everybody but supervisors, um, I wanna make sure, does that include nine one one staff? I think that there's their hourly is the same as their salary, so it would affect that, okay.
Sure.
Um, does it include um, mental health transport, right now it's twenty dollars an hour, is that just a standard twenty or just is there a raise?
We just set that.
Okay.
At twenty, so, I mean, I don't, I don't know basically.
If we just set that because that's a new, new thing, I think that should stay there.
Okay, and then medical death investigator, right now you have one dollar on call, twenty-five dollar clerk going on scene fifty. Is that left the same or is there a raise on that?
Has that been the same for?
That's been the same for.
There was, there was raises discussed and proposing the budget there that we never said no to, I guess, but I. Don't know. What your guys' intentions on that are.
That come under sales?
Yeah.
Phil's, Phil's one of them there, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's not separate like EMS is. It's not a separate fund.
And it's not, it's not a wage, it's just like what they get, I mean, it is, but it isn't.
It's, it's per.
Wages.
It's per call, it's it's a.
For service.
It it's driven by demand for that response, it's it's per, per, per response, per call, there is some.
Obviously.
Yeah, there is on-call stuff, but um, it's it's specific fee per incident.
I I wouldn't. I don't think they include really wages that's set.
Okay.
It's not a salary provision.
And that's what I thought, but I want, didn't wanna leave anybody out, so.
Um, or do you have something else?
Yeah, so um, you guys received a thank you from Marine Albert, so I'll just pass that down. And we're working on special election for September tenth, um, so we're getting ready for that coming up and then of course, the general election. November fifth, so stuff is ticking along for that as well. And then I think that's all that I have.
Alright. Perfect, thanks Tim. Jack?
Patty, I'll be gone next week. We had a drainage association meeting Wednesday. Pretty well, nothing new as far as uh, upcoming legislative action, nothing. Started yet this year, it started draining, wanna know what happened to all the legislative bills last year, I haven't. If you wanna read through it, I'm not gonna read through it. Um, as far as their income, we're on budget and expenses are on budget. We talked about quitting as supervisor, we're gonna need to appoint somebody to be on the drains commission. So that'll be on the agenda next month, our next meeting, figure that out. That's about all we have. Well, we talked about levies.
Oh, the drainage levies.
Yeah, and some of the people in the state wanna separate levies out of the drainage district law. But the law is all written with levies and drainage districts together, it would take. A lot of separating of. Past things and um.
Yeah, that would just take a lot of work.
Yeah, it would be a lot of work and a lot of expense, so I would recommend that we talk legislators out of that. Cause they don't know what they're talking about, cause that law is all tied together. Yeah. It'd be another one where they don't know what they're talking about.
Well, and that's. Is it people that have levies that wanna separate it?
Uh, no, it's mostly legislators that wanna figure out how come levy, levies fail. And they think that they can do something, but the levies are old and the people that. Look after the levies are mostly farmers that are in the drainage district and around the river. So if you leave it to a state organization, how are you gonna fund all this, right now it's funded vocally through the counties.
I think the levies are funded by the landowners there too, like our drainage districts, yeah.
That's why it's all written into the code, the way it's written.
Yeah.
And. Well, they talked about the levy failing in Spencer, but I don't think the levy really failed, I think it, the water went around the levy.
I think it just went right over top of it.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and around it.
And, yeah, around, I mean, it just, there wasn't enough capacity there.
Right, it wasn't big enough, long enough or?
I don't think it actually failed.
No. It just got too much water.
Well, seven inches will do that.
Hmm, yeah. That, that's about all that we have.
Alright, Josh?
I did not have any meetings last week, uh, tonight we have emergency management and the nine one one board.
Okay.
I also had no meetings this last week, um, did have peer connections this afternoon, but with our. Stuff going on here, I won't make that one, but uh, uh, I did wanna make a comment, Tammy, as far as the budget amendment goes. And who gets, who were the salaries, should get a raise or not, last week the motion was made to. Um, give a raise to all employees except for those in the union contract and and supervisors. My concern, I don't, I don't think that's an action that the board can take. In the budget amendment for elected officials, cause the compensation board still applies, you can't get a, give an even raise to you and Roger Fisher. Because of how the compensation board has to be an equal percentage. Cause they did set that, it still applies to this fiscal year, cause the new law changes for the next fiscal year, so.
But it is an equal percentage.
But it's not, the compensation board set, I forget what Roger Fisher did for the sheriff, was it fifteen percent or twelve and a half percent or something like that? And on your treasury recorder was everything else was six.
Yeah.
So it has to.
If we bring them down to two, we need to bring them.
Roger can't come down to two and you get two, is what I'm saying, I don't think that's a legal action the board can take in the budget amendment. So we're gonna have to look at that and get an attorney opinion on that and.
Okay.
How that's, should be handled.
Okay.
That was a question I had and I, I just didn't wanna proceed and.
Yeah.
Have things not go well.
Do we talk to Todd about that or?
Dan or or Mike Galaway would know too.
Yeah, I can, I, I'll make a call to Mike Galaway.
Yeah.
And if he says um. We have to change it so that it's the same percentage.
Right.
Uh, how do you wanna, how do you wanna handle that?
Well, I don't know, I, I guess I. It wasn't my motion, I, I didn't vote for it either, but uh, I, how, how the board wants to handle that.
Because the amendment has to be to the paper Friday in order to have the hearing on the thirteenth.
Yep.
So.
Well, do you wanna, when we have a break here, put a call into Mike and if we're meeting tomorrow, can post something and make a change then do or no?
We'd have to repost agenda for one o'clock.
I don't know then, but that's just a concern that I have.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Okay.
I will look into that.
Alright, thanks Dan. And I will, I'll touch on that as well, um, but I did have a executive committee meeting for C I J D C to discuss some of the complaints that have been. On our agenda recently that I lightly touched on, those were just in closed session, so I can't say anything there, but. I'm hoping we'll have some resolution to that this Friday when we have our full meeting. So I do have that coming up this Friday. Um, Thursday, we are planning to meet with Bancroft EMS about their um, concerns and that email we all got. And I guess you guys all got the text message, I believe, over the um, last couple days from. Um, Brian Goodman about our service and the kudos to our crew, so. It's, I think that's a, a sign, I mean, Brian vocally was one of the ones. That had a lot of concerns about how the service was going to progress and the. The vote for it be, being declared an essential service, I think he was very openly, very outspoken against that. At the time and he is, he has seen the value in it and I think that's, that's impressive. And I, I had a good conversation with him the other day too, after his text message and. I said point blank, I mean. Depending on how things worked out, it could've gone really good or really bad or anywhere in between and I guess I'm, I'm proud of. Where we're at today and where we plan to be in the future, um. In conversations with Phil, we hopefully will have our entire crew um, able to provide ALS services by the end of this year. With a class they're taking this fall, um, so. Over, and I'm not, not gonna get into all the terms because I don't wanna screw something up, but I think all of our EMTs. Are signed up for a class that will make them advanced EMTs, so they can provide some of the same. Things that paramedics can do, it's kind of an in-between between paramedics and EMTs, so um, I guess just for. Care of everyone in the county and stuff, if we have. All or most of our entire full-time crew that is able to provide those. Those skills and those healthcare needs in the field, I think that's really valuable, so. I think we're on the right track there, but. Um, just wanted to touch on that, but um, I did have similar concerns about the. Um, vote from last week and I talked to Elizabeth and she wa, she did have concerns about that. She did say engage, to talk with legal and um, I needed to talk to Ann for some other things, so I mentioned it to her and she said. She would double check with Mike on it, but, and I've not heard back from her on that yet, so. I do think that's something we need to check out and get an answer on before we proceed.
Maybe include Tammy in that conversation.
Yeah.
Do you want me to check with Mike or wait?
Um, when I talked to Ann yesterday on other stuff for C I J D C, she said he was kinda sick yesterday, so. She hadn't heard back from him on that topic, um, so if we have a break here, I would, I would check with Ann.
Okay.
Um, but.
Okay.
Just, just because she said he was sick the other day.
Okay.
But I guess in our conversation earlier about doing an internal loan or financing and stuff that way, I think. Our, our budget amendment is a piece here, but I mean, if. I guess I said a little bit before, but if we spend all of our fund balance, we're not gonna have fund balance, or do an internal loan or do some of those other things. So I, I think, and even, even including the raise that we voted on last week, um. That's, that's not one-time money, um, it's a yearly expense and I guess. As a board, after the public hearing where we sent out the max tax levy notices, we made the decision as a board to. Reduce the taxes that we were going to levy and. I guess in my opinion, the taxes either should've been raised or expenses should've been cut, you can't. Cut taxes and raise expenses at the same time, it's, it's not sustainable. And I agree with what you'd said in your comments during the vote on the library stuff, Roger, you said no one has answered where the money's going to come from. Um, you said multiple things about our employees that didn't get raises, paying towards health insurance, health insurance fund, dropping its fund balance. Uh, you said we have a lot of issues and we have a spending problem and I mean. At some point in time, if we make easy decisions now or what feels like easy, really hard ones are gonna come down the road and. I, I just, I'm not gonna, not gonna sit here quietly and act like everything's. Fine and dandy, um. I'm pretty concerned about some of the situations we have on the table here. And, and there's a lot of implications to other things when, when that happens, so. I don't know, open, open for a discussion with the board, but it's definitely a concern I have.
If you don't compensate your employees fairly, you're not gonna have any left to compensate. And our main job as supervisors is to provide a safe, workable county and that includes roads. That includes the sheriff's office, you have to have deputies. And if we don't act like we like our employees and give them a small raise, we're not gonna have any deputies left and we're not gonna have safety. So I get your concern, I do, but you have to look at the broad picture, the broad picture tells me that we don't have employees that are working on the roads and if we don't have. Employees that are in the sheriff's office doing the job that they're hired to do and compensated fairly, you're not gonna have people, you're not gonna have safety. So it's a double-edged sword, you, you can't have both, you're, you're either gonna have to cut something else or you're gonna have to. Give a fair compensation to your employees.
And I agree with pretty much all of what you said there, I do think it's important that, um, I mean, I think Roger Fisher made the comment last. Last meeting or whatever that, um, or someone did that we had averaged like one point five percent raise over how many years because. Benefits were still there and whatever, um, that hasn't been, we have far exceeded that the last couple of years and I think. But we, we did that knowing that times were tough and we wanted to support our employees and I'm, I'm not. I'm not against that by any means, but um. I also think there is a difference in position, I mean, when, when Roger says he's got deputies that can go to another county and make. Five figures more at a similar job, and you're talking, when you're talking ten plus thousand dollar differences. At our neighbors, that is a serious concern of mine, um. But that's, that's not an across-the-board issue, um, and I don't think a two percent raise across the board solves that problem.
Well, the two percent raise didn't take care of the two hundred and fifty dollars that you made all the employees pay for health insurance.
Health insurance also went up thirty, twenty by thirty percent.
In the end, it's total compensation that your employees look at, so we really. If you keep raising what you're gonna expect them to pay and don't give raises to the employees, pretty soon you're not gonna have any employees left.
But if we include total compensation over the last, say, three, five years, whatever. I, I think we've treated our employees very well here.
Until this year, slammed them pretty hard.
But your total cost of living is also went up faster than what we gave raises.
It's, that's been across the board for everyone in this country.
Right.
For the most part, definitely, probably everyone in this county.
Yeah, but we haven't kept up with market, the market for employees outside the county has went up faster than what we compensated the employees in the county. And if you hire on market, you don't hire on what you think is the right wage. I get your point totally, but you gotta look at my point too, we have to have qualified employees or we're not gonna have services provided to the people of the county.
I, I get that, but.
I, I understand your point, but you understand my point. Sometimes a little bit of. Sometimes a little bit of compensation or, or something that you do to the employees makes them feel better. I'm not saying it's an end-all either, but we can't just do nothing.
And, and I can see that, I just think we need to, we need to keep the big picture in mind, that there's a lot of, lot of other implications here.
Well, you're gonna have a lot of problems when you do your next budget.
And that's what I'm afraid of.
You're, you're gonna have big issues that, it's gonna come right back to everything that we did this year, again, I know.
And it's gonna be worse because of what we're doing.
Cause our fund balance will be less. I understand.
Yep. And, and if we keep adding more expenses to that, it, it will make it even worse next year.
But I don't think the plan should be to not compensate employees and have attrition be the salvation of the county, cause attrition, usually you lose your best employees, not your worst.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that's the solution or, or anything in that regard, I'm...
You see my point.
I have a question, if I can.
Uh, I think we're gonna keep it to board discussion, and I plan to run our meetings a lot closer to Robert's, the order moving forward. Thank you for asking that.
So, can I ask a question? Are you saying that you don't agree with the amendment, or that you should reconsider it? Because if you're not gonna vote for it, if it's not gonna be approved, it's a lot of money to put into the paper and a lot of work if we're not gonna go forward with it, so is that what you're saying?
I think it'd be a disaster for your employees right now if you rescind that, because they are expecting it.
It'd be a disaster for a lot of reasons.
Yeah.
I, I don't think you can. You have, you're gonna have to take, you're gonna have to look at, look at all this stuff, the next start your budget process and move earlier and start looking at fund balances probably in November, and start planning your next year's budget accordingly.
That's...
This is gonna be difficult to do with two important members coming on
Well, they're in January.
Well, that's, uh, but that's...
We can start the conversation, it's still the majority of the board.
Correct.
But, yeah.
That's, uh...
Well, you, you, you can have conversations on the budget, but you don't have, you don't make the final decision on the budget until after January with the new board members, so basically, you could massage some things in the budget before January, if you wanted to.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that, I mean, there's, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of things we discussed during this budget process. Um, and I mean, even, even our amendment before the end of the calendar year, or the end of the fiscal year, where we accounted for our extra interest income, I mean, i- if, if that changes, we've got another, we added what, four hundred thousand?
That was the last year.
For la- yeah, for last fiscal year.
Yeah.
But, but we projected higher interest be- and we got it, I mean, that, we were confident in getting it, that's not the issue, but if, if interest rates come back down or whatever, I mean, there's...
There's a whole host of things that's gonna change, so...
A- and, and those are gonna have big impacts on us, I mean, we...
It's always been that way.
Well, a- and really, I guess, with the effects of House File seven eighteen, that we maxed out our general and rural, um, to what we could do with those. Supplemental's the only thing we had left to raise, and in our max tax levy, we accounted for moving things around and raising our supplemental, and then we didn't do that in the end, not as much as we had proposed in the beginning, but, um, I, without severely cutting, um, expenditures in the next fiscal year, that's possibly gonna be our only, only avenue left. Um, and I don't, I don't know if that's even possible to adjust for this fiscal year.
Directly, so. Your drain is gonna be over at the election center.
What are, what are you here for?
The drain is gonna be over at the election building.
We're over here.
Yeah.
Yep. Crossroad. Um...
Is Marge open there?
I don't know, I told her we were ready for her in here, and she never came in, so... Do you mind if we step up?
Yeah.
It should, it should be, it should be opened up already.
Yeah, that's fine, you're good.
Do you wanna bring her in here? Where do you wanna do that?
Yeah, we can get drain requests, we got, we got time.
We need to get those done so we can vote it.
Yep, um, so, I, I don't know if that's something we can even do during the fiscal year, is as far as moving expenses to supplemental instead of out of general basic, um. I think that's a...
Probably have to turn over your budget number.
Well, and...
They can move it after, after you put it in the levies.
I, I don't know, I, when I was talking to Elizabeth, we barely touched on that. I think she said you can, but it's very discouraged because it's an accounting nightmare.
I didn't think you could.
Well, you can't change the levies, but like the location of where things are paid out.
I didn't think you could lo- change the location.
And, and I don't know, I just, I feel like she made a comment about that being a nightmare to track the books on, um, so, that'd be a question to dig in with her more, but I mean, if we keep affecting the fund balances, it's, it's gonna be even worse for next year. I just, I wanted to share my concern, so it's...
I think every board has the same concern. When I always go to other meetings and I talk to other supervisors, they all have the same concern, they're all...
One of our neighboring counties I was visiting with, they're, they didn't deal with quite the issues we dealt with this past year, but they're expecting to deal with it this year.
And, and you got...
Afraid of having to lay off people.
The dirty, dirty, they're, they're working to get their levy rate down to what the state recommended, and they're having tons of issues.
Yep.
We have had other counties that are buying used equipment instead of new equipment, and all counties are making adjustments.
Yep.
So, you, you're not alone, you're gonna have to deal with it.
Um, the sooner we deal with it, the easier it's gonna be, I have a feeling, but...
It's been talked about in the past, that, you know, counties sharing personnel, that's, that could be another thing that's gonna come about, sharing county attorneys, sharing engineers.
Yep. So...
Could be some things that could be on the horizon as well.
Yep, well, I guess if, I would encourage everyone to think long and hard on that and, and yeah, communicate with other counties and stuff, because, yeah, it's valuable information, they're going through it too, so...
Do we need the super majority to pass the budget amendment, or just the majority?
Just the majority.
Majority. Um, all right, I think we're ready for repair request, Marge. Thank you.
I was just curious, Derek.
And
Thanks, Marge.
Since we do need to get moved across the road and set up, I think everyone's seen these in our packet. Has ever, anyone not seen them or got any questions?
Lots of requests, low and title, and...
Yep.
So...
Yep. Um, well, if everyone's okay, we can skip reading them for today, and I would...
The supervisors take care of the requests.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. You can sign these and, um, for DD ninety, quick railroad update, um, we got a response from Union Pacific, and they, um, basically the short version is, they've kinda agreed to all the engineering aspects of it. The only, the only thing left is the financial side of who pays for it and, and their interpretation of the code versus our interpretation of the code. So, um, I believe Bob Goodman was out this last week, and Spencer said he was gonna follow up with him on Monday, and I haven't heard anything since then. So I don't know if Spencer got in touch with him yet or not, but it, it comes down to legal and money right now, so, um, one of, one of their options was to have a, basically, I think, I think their offer was to kinda have a discussion and see if we would negotiate with them to some degree. And I guess my own, food for thoughts, if you guys got any thoughts, but I said to Spencer, I said the most I'd really be willing to negotiate is if we figure out the cost of what we're doing in the railroad right away, what it would cost out in the middle of a field, and we could pay that, which would be very, very small compared to what the actual cost would be, and let the railroad pay the rest, because they're responsible for the difference in price, um, just with crossing it right away.
I D D A wants them to pay full, because you're setting a precedent, and that's where, where we're at, and I was supposed to say that to you.
Yep, and I...
And when you figure something out, tell me so I can inform I D D A what, what the precedent's gonna be.
Well, we're gonna have to push them on that, and, and that, I would imagine, will probably take some legal manpower, but, yeah.
Cause you're setting the precedent right now to stay...
Well, and, and I agree, I don't, I don't think we should compromise much, if any. Um, I don't think we should compromise at all, to be quite honest, but if we compromise anything, it should be very little, in my opinion. Um, so, that's a quick update on that, and any questions?
Nope, get over there.
Otherwise, well, that should...